Everybody, welcome to the board of health meeting for July 17. It is 6:30 PM. Do we have any public comment?
No.
No, okay. We need a motion to approve the minutes of June 12, 2023.
Our motion to approve the minutes of June 12, 2023.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second.
Any corrections or adjustments or changes need be made? Any further discussion? Melissa?
Ms. Althoff?
Oh, she's not here. Mr. Clark?
Upstate.
Ms. Murawski?
Yes.
Ms. Carmen?
Yes.
Dr. Katz?
Yes.
Dr. McGuire?
Upstate.
Dr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Gaffney? Yes, thank you. Tonight, we have employee recognition. We have one this evening, correct?
One employee anniversary recognition, which is kind of a nice thing.
Okay. For the record, Panny, would you like to say something about your employee?
Oh, I sure would. So it's Zach Baugh. He is one of our environmental health practitioners. And he started off 12 years ago, apparently, as our groundwater specialist. Then he expanded his, you know, his experiences and knowledge by then moving into private sewage, public health nuisance, and most recently into the food protection program. So Zach is now not only one of our more experienced and longest-employed field environmental health practitioners, but he just became licensed as well. So he's always willing to go out and help, you know, other people and do all types of things, help out the other staff. And, you know, he's very well-liked and he's valued those staff members.
Congratulations. We have a couple of other recognitions tonight. We've asked Mr. Clark to do the proclamations.
A proclamation commending staff of the high-risk infant, maternal, and child health program for exceptional work. Whereas, the Illinois Division of Family and Community Services conducted a program review of the McHenry County Department of Health High-Risk Infant, Maternal, and Child Health Program. And whereas, this program provides case management services to high-risk infants in McHenry County with the goal of reducing infant mortality or morbidity. And whereas, the primary goals of the program are to minimize disability in high-risk infants by early identification of possible conditions, requiring further evaluation, diagnosis, and treatment, promote optimal growth and development of infants, teach family care of the high-risk infant, and decrease stress and potential for abuse. And whereas, the April 14, 2023 program review resulted in 100% achieved performance across all audit indicators and noted commendation for exceeding program requirements on multiple indicators. And now therefore be proclaimed by this McHenry County Board of Health in McHenry County, Illinois, that the members of the board offer their appreciation and congratulations to the nursing division staff of the High-Risk Infant, Maternal, Child Health Program within McHenry County Department of Health for their exceptional dedication to delivering quality case management services to the people of McHenry County. Be it further proclaimed that the county clerk is authorized to distribute a certified copy of this proclamation to the Director of Public Health Nursing, County Administrator, and the Public Health Administrator dated at Woodstock, Illinois, the 17th day of July 2023.
Congratulations. And Susan, work with your staff to put something together for the recognition for everybody in the office. That'd be great. The second recognition?
The second recognition, a proclamation honoring Carol Wagner in the McHenry County Department of Health. Whereas, Carol Wagner has been an employee of the McHenry County Department of Health as a public health nurse for over nine years. And whereas, Carol Wagner earned her certified diabetes care and education special certification with over 1,000 hours of providing diabetes care and education. And whereas, as a public health nurse, Carol has led the county programs such as Take Charge of Your Diabetes and has provided over 430 McHenry County residents with skills and tools for self-management and prevention of diabetes. Whereas, Carol has dedicated much of her career at the McHenry County Department of Health to bringing our community together to provide screenings and education around the importance of diabetes management and prevention. And whereas, a result of Carol's hard work and dedication, McHenry County Department of Health has been recognized by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention as having an accredited diabetes prevention program. And now therefore be proclaimed by this County Board of McHenry County, Illinois, that the members of the board congratulate Carol Wagner on her outstanding service to our community. Her honor is one of the Shaw Media McHenry County 2023 Women of Distinction. And be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be spread upon the records of McHenry County Board and that the county clerk is authorized to distribute certified copies to the county administrator and the McHenry County Board of Health as a sign of our respect and esteem dated this day, the 18th day of July 2023.
Carol, everyone's Carol. Congratulations. Okay, we're going to go on with the department updates.
Okay, just super quick, and hold you a little more update on one of the other projects or a couple of the other projects that's really interesting. But we are getting closer and closer. We have roughly 14 projects that have either been sort of greenlighted by the Bronner Group and/or have already been obligated and spoken for. So we still have a few other things in the hopper that we are working with that consulting firm to get their feedback so we know how to refine it. And you'll notice on the agenda tonight, we have a number of approved projects that are moving forward. Then, secondly, the state, we have these regular calls with the state regarding administrative-related things or anything the state wants to communicate to each of the local health departments. And today, they talked about the Local Health Protection Grant. So this year, or going into fiscal year '24, the state got an additional $6 million for the Local Health Protection Grant. So we learned today, without having specifics, that it looks like we will see a significant increase here in McHenry County. Part of that is because our population has grown since the last time that they put the formula together. So I don't want to put out the number, but it's pretty exciting because I'd like to see it in writing before I share that. But that's exciting, and we'll be sitting down then to see how we can best utilize those dollars. And again, those are for our mandated programs.
Thank you. Any questions for Melissa? Going to go straight down the line here. Director Powell?
That's good, thank you very much. I just have a few updates for you. Sorry, was not here last month. We just finished our third clinic for the spring season, and we did about 340 one-year and three-year rabies vaccine. That's good for us because normally we're around 75 to 80 animals coming in for a clinic. And of course, we were over 100 for each of those clinics, so it's great. I can't tell you that they're needing because we opened up our clinic, even though we didn't officially open up our clinic for September, and it's already filling up. And that's September, so. And our microchip clinics that we do once a month, once every other month, were filled in May for August. So we know that that's obviously needed as well. I don't know how many microchips we'll be able to do in a whole year because you can only do so much with staff. But we'll try to keep upping those, maybe do an off-site clinic next spring. We have two, sorry, three clinics set for the fall, which I won't give you those dates quite yet because we're just confirming those with Dr. Kennedy. So we're very excited about that. We're going to try to do at least eight next year. Typically, we're only required to do one. We started to go two, we got up to six, and then I think it was last year and the year before, we did eight. So this year, we'll be back at six again, and we'll see if we can get it to eight next year. You will see that we have an uptick in the number of animals that are either coming in as relinquishes, coming in as strays. And although there are more people asking for relinquishments, we don't have the room because we're getting more strays in. So if we're filled up with strays, we have to keep a certain amount of cages open for any type of cruelty that takes place, we have to bring those in. So we're just really kind of filling up with all those strays. The other thing you'll see is that the bites have gone up. And I suspect that the strays and the relinquish and the bites are going up because of COVID. So you had people who were getting puppies during COVID, and those animals didn't necessarily get hands-on training. Some of them got online training, which is okay. But then, just like all of us, we kind of consoled ourselves during COVID. I think a lot of these puppies or kittens got consoled as well and just don't have very good manners. So now, we're seeing a lot of animals coming in, either strays or relinquishments, that just don't have good manners, and they're at that two-, three-year-old range where it's difficult to train them out of those manners. So it's harder to adopt them out from our facility because of those manners, and then there are more of them coming in. So I just thought you should be sort of aware of that because that also is part of our culture here in McHenry County, too. Those strays and relinquishments. And that's all.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the report, and I noticed that there's a significant increase year-over-year on cats vaccinated. Is that the trend that you're seeing?
Yes. Oh, thank you for bringing that up. So overall, we're up about 4,000 vaccines for this year. So that's good because our goal is 10,000 more vaccines each year. That means more cats, more cats, more cats in each one of those. So we try to offer at least one clinic for cats. The difficulty is people are just very reluctant about vaccinating their cats. So it's hard for us to fill those clinics. So now, in the fall, what we're doing is we're doing them as mostly dog clinics with some portion for cats. And then if we see that there's a waitlist for cats, then we'll open up another cat clinic. But we are trying to, in a variety of ways, bring in more cats to get their vaccines and getting the public to understand that they need to come in.
Do you think it would be beneficial to have, like, clinics that participate veterinarian? That if they would do it for a stipend or something, that they would have them come in?
Yeah, I don't know if our budget would be able to hold a stipend. It might be something that maybe we consider getting a grant for or see what kind of grants would be out there for specifically for cat vaccinations. Because we are one of the last counties in the state to require cat vaccinations. Now, of course, the state requires cat vaccinations now, but most of the counties are already doing it.
And I do know that, from experience, that the general exam fees have gone skyrocketed for pets. So if you have a couple of cats, you're going to make up $100 just to have the vaccine. It doesn't include the vaccination.
And I would say that people are going more to those tractor supplies, hold vaccine clinics. Some of the other farm and fleet will hold a vaccine clinic. Some of the rescues are now trying to hold some vaccine clinics.
You know, Dr. Klein has that mobile practice. That might be something she'd be interested, like, just pulling into a Walmart, like, to do the Walmart vaccine.
Actually, they were going to hook up with one of the rescues to do a vaccine.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Director Powell? Andrew Dees?
So right now, pulling budgets together. We're getting ready to roll them off. Everybody's budgets are due through the end of this week. Then we'll roll up and review next week. And then we'll meet with county as well as then finance committee here for the other budgets. We are on target for our current budget. There's nothing out of the ordinary. So does anyone have any questions or disbursements?
No questions? Thank you. Director Merron?
Thank you. We hired a new community information coordinator, this very tall gentleman back here. This is Nick Kubiak. Wanted to tell him a little bit about yourself, Nick.
Sure. So aside from being six foot seven, lived in Woodstock since I was eight years old. I'm from Woodstock, not south, but east, original Woodstock-y old. Previously, I was at Crystal Lake Chamber of Commerce. I was marketing communications manager over there. But I couldn't pass up this opportunity here, so I'm glad to be here.
Welcome. Thank you. Nick and I met with the nursing team this morning, the program coordinators, and are setting up a lot of schedules for events and programs that are coming out from November, July, and August. We'll be meeting with the other directors and the other divisions as well to make sure he knows who's who and take him on a tour of all the different buildings and offices. We continue to work on ARPA funding, as Melissa said today. Staff met together on the Crystal Lake building, and we went through a floor plan, kind of the entire building on what our wish list was. Our next step is we'll be meeting with facilities to kind of see what's going to be considered capital, what can be considered ARPA, get our plan together, and then submit to the Bronner Group once again. So we keep that on track. Strategic planning update, we have the final draft of the plan. It's under review right now. Staff will be meeting on July 27 for a final meeting, and it will be presented to you in August. So we're very excited about that. The personnel policy update is on its final review as well and is scheduled to be at the personnel committee meeting also on August 8. So we will have that to you at the August meeting as well. We continue to set up training for staff. We have set up two training sessions for mental health first aid. And this is in partnership with the McHenry County Mental Health Board. It's a free training session, learning how to spot mental health issues, learning how to deal with those, and also learning how to see them within yourself. It is a day-long course, so we're very excited. We're doing one in August and one in November. So it's free of charge, and we're very excited we can find something like this for staff. Yes, Nick?
I am trained in teen mental health first aid. If you wanted to push out some sort of partnership to hit some of the kids, not hit. Just as an FYI.
Awesome, awesome. We will reach out to you. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Any other questions for Director Merron? Thank you, Director Karas.
The state of IDPH has posted some changes to the Illinois Administrative Code for controlled communicable diseases. They're posted for 45 days, they went up on Friday. So we are looking through those closely to make sure we need to make a comment on any of those changes. Just perusing through it quickly, I don't see anything that is just not going to help and strengthen my response to communicable diseases. We have provided, we are, tomorrow, we are going to be going to Northwest Medicine Emergency Department to provide some education on PEP administration for rabies. We've been having a lot of misadministration of PEP or giving PEP when it really isn't needed. It's quite expensive. So we are excited that we reached out to Northwest, and they have invited us in to provide that training to their ED department. Back to School Bash, Friday, July 28. We are excited to be participating in this event. It seems like the emails today has gotten quite big. So I'm excited for the success of this program and hope for, you know.
It's out of control.
It looks fine.
In a great way. Are there children registered for vaccines?
You know, I do not know. I was not able to check with staff today. I was saying Sarah's out, so.
It did sound like maybe there were none, which is really sad. So I'm wondering if we could do some sort of push. I don't know how, but we were just talking about that earlier today because it's just such a wonderful opportunity.
What I would suggest, what I was going to suggest, but we have a meeting on Friday, is that each agency has kind of referred a lot of their clients to backpacks, right? And so do we one more push from our agencies? Like, those people that are registered, just FYI, if you guys haven't gotten vaccines, county will be there because I'm not sure how, like, if they're aware of that so much. But we have right now, I think, with roughly around over 400 people that will be receiving youth that will be receiving backpacks. And we anticipate more than 500 people attending the event. So, you know, at least those 400 that are registered for backpacks, if we could do a push out and just say that county will be there. And the registration would be required for this and maybe sending the link for the registration. So hopefully, that would be.
Yeah, just specifically for vaccines. We can't give out any more backpacks or feed any more people. At no cost.
So in the event that, so we can work with Nick and Susan, right, to push out some additional information. But have you guys thought about putting a slip or something? So let's say they don't sign up for this. Can we put communication in there to encourage people to do vaccination, whether it's with us or going to their nutrition?
That's a really good idea, yeah.
Right, like, it'll just be in that backpack.
Yeah, so we could do that. Yeah. If you guys want to give me 210, I can, we'll be stuffing backpacks. So if you guys get two ton to Youth and Family Center, but then also to Ken, she's doing a lot, Ken's doing a lot more than just this event. So that could be just a little add-on to their backpacks. It's a great idea. So if they don't get the vaccination at the event, they'll still know the resource and basic information that they would need.
And I'm guessing it should be in English and Spanish?
Yes, and put it on colored paper so it doesn't get thrown out.
Yeah, fluorescent. Yeah.
Yeah, like, and like card, card stuff.
Card stuff.
Like what, a poster? Mini poster? Postcard, that's what it means. Yeah.
So do you have a communications person? Has it been given an assignment?
I would recommend you identify the types of vaccines available.
Yeah.
Those that have required vaccines for schools have catcher eye. And say no.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Karas?
We're also going to be at the county fair. We're going to be working with Nick on that. So the county fair is August 1 through the 6, so I encourage you all to come out and see and visit our trailer and the staff. Also, there, I don't, the media has picked it up in a few places. They put out a health advisory, IDPH did. We're having a cyclospora increasing cases in Illinois that's associated in metro Chicago area. 65 of the 79 cases in the last 60 days attended events in Chicago in June 2023. We do not have any case, any of our residents at this time have not been diagnosed with cyclospora. But, you know, they did put out this alert for us to watch for that. And there's a special thing we have to fill out in the CDC and IDPH. One more plug for Carol and the diabetic program. It's in your pack and under the highlights. The CDC just gave us full plus recognition, which means because of our success in our program, now we have a full five-year accreditation instead of three.
Oh, great.
Any additional questions for Director Karas? Thank you. Director No?
Sure, just a couple of things. We did hold our Household Hazardous Waste Event last month. We had about 1,000 attendees, so it went very, very smoothly. My staff worked very hard on it. We got a lot of compliments. People were really in and out probably in less than 10 minutes. It went well. We don't have the numbers yet of what was collected, but we'll have that. We do post that on the website. We do have an event this Saturday. This Saturday's event is just for document shredding and electronics. This is the event in the year we'll be partnering with the city of Woodstock because they use that bad tax money from Woodstock. And then Woodstock residents actually can recycle their TVs and computer screens at no cost, which is nice because those are usually very well-attended. And then finally, this week, I'll be meeting with Planning and Development and their software vendor with SmartGov. They're working on some upgrades for, you know, electronic processing of all of their applications. And we are trying to partner with them to have part of that work in environmental health as well. So I'm excited about that. And then we have other things going, mostly tied to the ARPA resolutions coming forward. So if you may have questions on that part, we'll give you that.
Great. Any questions for Director No? Okay, we changed the agenda just a little bit, just to bring your attention to the consent agenda we've added in the department. We also added anything that's a contract renewal that we've done in the past for simplification. So please look at that right now and let me know if there's anything that you want to pull out for discussion or any questions on. Otherwise, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mimi?
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Dr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Murawski?
Yes.
Ms. Carmen?
Yes.
Dr. Katz?
Yes.
Ms. Althoff?
Yes.
Dr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Gaffney? Yes. We have a new contract with Western Shelter.
This is for Region 9 Emergency Response EMA. We will be parking a trailer that's fully packed with everything we would need to set up any kind of clinic or outreach. And we'll be parked over at the Crystal Lake location for all of Region 9 to be able to use.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions for Director Karas? Mimi? Dr. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Carmen?
Yes.
Ms. Althoff?
Yes.
Dr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Murawski?
Yes.
Dr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Gaffney? Yes, thank you. Last time for new business, unfinished business, we have some committee vacancies. Jay Galati didn't get his application in. Jay Galati didn't get his application in timely for his position on the Board of Health. The new members of the Board of Health, we have one additional new member, but their term will not be effective until tomorrow, correct?
After tomorrow night.
After tomorrow night.
So for those of you who are not on a committee, what should we do here, a moment?
Um, they were the... I don't know.
Let me look at you. So we have, so Jay's term expired. He was the chairperson of the Regulation and Ordinance Motion and Planning Committee, so we need the chairperson for that committee. We still have five members, even though he's not here. We also have a vacancy on the Finance Committee, which is now down to four, and he was also on the Retail Advisory Committee and the Environmental Health Committee. So we have quite a few openings. Is there any volunteers?
Finance.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone want to get on the Food Committee? That doesn't meet very often. Most of these don't meet hardly at all. Well, we can nominate, your daughter's gonna be on the board, right?
You can ask, make assignments.
Okay.
You, you, you place the people on the committee that you feel is right, then we approve your selection.
Okay.
So...
Anybody that's only on one committee, please raise your hand.
I don't know.
He's on one.
Well, he just signed up.
He just signed up. Is anybody, you're only on one committee?
I think so.
Is anyone on zero committees? Raise your hand.
I don't know how many I'm on. I never was told what committees I was on, so I don't know.
You're on Personnel.
Okay, so...
I'll go on Environmental.
Okay. And like I said, these meetings, if they meet quarterly, that would be unusual. If they meet twice a year, that would still probably be unusual. Really, the big committees are the Personnel Committee and the Finance Committee and the Regulation Committee.
True, but not for example.
The Finance Committee's not that big, either. What I'm just saying is that they don't meet that often, and usually, you can try to meet before the Board of Health meeting to minimize things better. So as I look at the vacancies, and a small hand went up, why don't you be on the Food Committee that never meets? That would be a good...
I mean, I like, I like food.
Okay.
Then you probably shouldn't be on that.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
So, so we've got five on the Finance Committee now. We have the Retail Food Advisory Committee. We've got one applicant. That should fill that one. Environmental Health, thank you. And so, Ordinance, I'm on that one already. Again?
Yeah, you are.
It's like the fickle finger of fate. Should've spun the wheel.
All right. Will this table that one until next month? Is everyone okay with that? So do we have a motion to approve the nominations?
I'm motion to approve the nominations.
The selections?
For...
Volunteerism?
Food and environmental health.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
There you go. Thank you.
Your work.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Morowski?
Yes.
Dr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Dr. McGuire?
Yes.
Dr. Katz?
Yes.
Ms. Althoff?
Yes.
Ms. Carmen?
Yes.
Ms. Gaffney?
Thank you, yes. If you can send out the committee list as updated, and then we'll ask them to pick a chairperson if there's not one for this election. We don't have any other board issues on the calendar. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring up?
Yes, I would just like to notify the board as a whole that the semi-annual evaluation of the department administrator is due. This is, I believe, the first time we're doing one mid-year, and at this point in time, I am going to have a meeting as the chairman of Personnel with Melissa, and to have conversation of progress and results from the last six months. And I'm gonna determine that that's gonna be the six-month review. If any board members would like it done differently, or would like to have some input, please reach out to me or to Cindy and let her know, so that we can take that into consideration. The annual evaluation is due coming up in October, November, and that will be done through the Personnel Committee, as it has in the past, as a group effort. This is just a mid-year conversation, if you will.
And I apologize. Do we, do we have goals that have been set up from year to year? Couldn't maybe the people on the Personnel Committee get a copy of those? Please?
I may have already gotten a copy of those. I may, I may have, I may have not read them at all. But if I could get them, I would appreciate it.
You probably could not.
I'm sure I'm not.
You did not.
It is not a reflection on staff. It is totally me.
And actually, would you just send it out to everybody in case anyone has some paperwork for you or your new community?
Thank you.
Sorry. A good idea. Any other further new business or things we need to put on next month's agenda?
Well, I just have a question, just for someone to send something along with us. Is there like a email server or a list or something that means that so that we don't have to make sure that we keep up to date list? Like, is there...
Sure. I would, I would recommend, we have a distribution list for all the new board members, and it goes out like the Board of Health packet. The easiest thing for you to do is just submit it to Darlene or Mimi, and they'll send it out to everybody.
In your orientation packet, though, is a list of contact information for all of Board of Health and key staff members, but we can send that out, too, just as an update for everybody.
Obviously, he changes it.
Well, yeah, so we'll update it.
And he'll type in the wrong, typed the wrong letter in an email. Sometimes things you don't want sent to other people by mistake. Sure. And part of the protocols that we use is that if it's disseminated from staff and not you communicating to other board members, we're not in any kind of violation of the meaning set, so...
So therefore, try to route things through staff.
Correct.
Then, staff can move it on to the board members.
Right.
Don't reply at all.
No, reply at all.
Don't reply at all.
Yeah, don't, yeah, don't reply at all. Anything else? Well, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. 7:09.
I did not think about it. I was like, oh my gosh, can I walk in here? I was like, oh my god. Now, see, I've been outside enjoying myself. I think I've had some fun. I've been having fun. I was so much fun.
Who's dairy farm?
Run stop.
Danner stop?
Danner stop, yes.
Brilliant.
Yeah.